I will call the meeting to order. The chairman, there's a quorum present. Let's do that.
I like the United States of America and to the refunding for which is one nation, under cross, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's go into 2.0, which is additions and revisions to the agenda.
All right.
I have, we are going to pull 4.1, consider approval of the June 7th, 2023 minutes of the internet outage. This weekend did not make it so they could not get their final review in time, so I will add those to the next meeting.
Which one is it?
The June 7th, minute, meeting minutes.
She sent them to me, but I didn't have any internet to work out on them.
And then I would like to add 4.8, which is consider approval of public transportation grant agreement number 35066 extension to June 30th, 2026. And then under unfinished business, add 5.2, consider approval of revised 2023 premium agreement with RadComp Technology.
Any other additions or revisions?
I'll do mine in a network.
Works for me. No, I like an efficient meeting, Pat. Okay. 3.0 is correspondence and public comment. Individuals with issues to address the county court may do so at this time. And at other times throughout the meeting, speakers are asked to raise your hands to be recognized by the chair. Give your name and address and then comments to three minutes. If you are signing in on Zoom, first if you dialed your phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you are on the Zoom, it's a lower left hand corner of your screen on your computer to unmute. And then as always, like to remind folks that we are in an informal bunch. So as we move through the agenda, if there are items that you want to provide and put on, ask questions about, we welcome feedback. Any public comment? Okay, let's move into correspondence. First up is the treasurer's report. There's the revenue expense report, fund balance summary, and bank account balances. Those are all incorporated as part of the court packet. So those are online. Folks want to see where we are financially and that's the report that Nathan puts together. Um, okay, let's see. First step is a letter from Tom and Jane Campbell. This one is short enough. I think I'll go ahead and read it. It stated June 22nd, says, Dear Court members, we are writing to you today to request some work be done on the Lone Rock Road. We spoke to roadmaster Dewey Kennedy and he suggested we should address our request to you directly. There's been a lot of road improvements on the Lone Rock Road in recent years and for that everyone is very appreciative. However, there is one dangerous stretch of the road that has not been improved. The stretch we are referring to is the eastern side of the Erickson grade, also referred to as 30 mile grade. The upper stretch, the upper part of the stretch is very narrow and with a mostly blind corner near the top. The outside shoulder varies between narrow and non-existent. Needing a semi truck or even a pickup and trailer on that stretch is dangerous and nearly impossible. The inside shoulder also is almost non-existent and against a hillside, making it impossible to get out of the way. Please consider fixing the stretch of road. It would be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Tom and Jane Campbell. Want to address that here? Okay.
What we need to do is really have a depth discussion about the cost and how we're going to do all of that and whether you need to require engineering for that, or I mean, we're going to price ourselves out of being able to get that done pretty quick and time-wise and everything else. And probably something we can do internally. You have some feedback on that?
I've got the project planned on either side of the road. On the north side of the road is all solid rock, so it'll require a lot of drilling and blasting. On the south side of the road, it's a shaded side of the road, but it's mostly soil. That's where I prefer to go. There's, it's easy to keep the road open. Actually, the old county road is still there. It's just eight feet wide. So that's where I would recommend building it. I spoke to the landlord about about right away. He's not opposed to it. I don't think we need to get it engineered. I just think we need to get it surveyed and reconditioned the project.
So is it right where you come off the top then?
Where you come off the top and then head down.
Okay.
You come down and then it would just, just be a sweeping corner around just below that pond.
Okay.
That's there and then just hug that bank and then come around there by that, by the old boyar category.
Because when they were talking about the
And it's not
Erickson grade, I was thinking they were talking like the west side.
Well, the west side, we've done everything we can do to that. We widened it down there by the barn. We did the top. All we can do with the top is it's the other side. That's the only part of the road we haven't touched.
Okay.
And it's not in the budget to do that project necessarily, but we could shovel things.
The work to, the dirt work is just busy work. It would be the asphalt would be the, that would be the cost.
And if we do it like baseline, I'm guessing that we probably wouldn't do the asphalt for another year, you know, after we got the dirt work.
So it could be budgeted for next year then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be
Which is going to be the expect.
Probably do, depending on the winter, we'd probably do the dirt work this winter. And get everything excavated out, do what we had to do and then the good part about it is I can leave the existing road where it is. So the people will drive on pavement and tell, will you pave? And then they'll take out that and do the reclamation on the, on the old road. So it will go away.
And it's as far as the engineering is, I mean, you know that a built road will build them, build them. So it's just my recommendation will be that we proceed.
And I think honestly on a lot of these road stuff, I mean, to me, this is why we have the road advisory committee. There should be a plan where we are addressing all of these tricky spots.
It is on the plan.
Okay.
It's just, it kind of got pushed back just because of basically Cedar Springs. When we looked at the bypass road on Cedar Springs and then that's when you go into engineering and you go into all of that, I pretty well, I just backed off of this and doing what we can.
I'm just thinking that from the courts, at least from my perspective, maybe Leah has a different perspective. But I really view this like whose road gets paved and when is not necessarily a decision that actually comes up to the court. I mean, that we trust that you, working with the road advisory committee and Pat, and that you're obviously during the budget, talking about what things cost and what the overall plan is. But I don't know enough to know if this is, this is the road that needs the most attention versus someplace else in the county. And I think that's why we have the road advisory committee.
I'm addressing issues, trying to spread it out all over the county. When we get baseline at four mile done, then we're going to kind of venture out kind of western Condon here a little bit more, do some stuff here, but then we get Erickson grade done, Lone Rock Road is that's as good as we can do on the grades and stuff.
Well, let's put it on the agenda for the next
Yeah.
Route committee meeting and then we'll
Yeah, I will get a plan to get the switch down right away and and have that go.
Okay. Um, all right. The next step on correspondence is from Yemital County Public Health. And they, as a reminder, do environmental health for us. And this is their year in the court. So they're just basically saying they did 16 inspections and they kind of break that down. And so for folks who are interested in seeing that information from them, that is going to be part of the packet. So online.
What is the temp on that? Is your temp facilities are doing or? Like during the fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, for events or things like that.
Yeah. And then we have an email from Patrick Sloan, resigning from Columbia Ridge Lane Phil Citizens Advisory Committee effective the fifth of June. Someone had to flag that. Miranda, where are we with, do we have enough numbers? Are we looking at the numbers?
We have enough numbers.
Okay. Okay.
And we had a meeting scheduled in June and now I think it got shut to September.
Well, he wasn't able to go and then it just kind of trickled over. Things came up for lots of people. So we did
So September.
So September will be our next meeting, Friday.
And then there is a note as well about Kiera Takaki, who her term on the cultural trust coalition ended on June 30th. She has decided not to re-up. So are we looking then for another Condon person? Are we doing a small board? What's the status?
I mean, technically we're okay, but having another Condon person will be good.
Okay. So folks in Condon, if you are interested in helping promote arts and culture and kind of building upon some of the work that the Condon Arts Council is doing, other people in the community are doing. This is a really good opportunity to volunteer. It's not a heavy lift, couple of meetings a year. And you get to help direct where some of the arts and culture funding that the county receives goes. So please consider raising your hand and being part of that process. And then we are continuing with our parade of final grant reports coming in because of the fiscal year. So we have one in here from the Condon Early Learning Center, wrapping up their special projects grant for the fiscal year that just concluded. One from Dillon County for each international club and special projects grants. And final one is the operational support grant report from Summit Springs Village. All of those are available on the court's website. If you're a member of the public and interested to see how those dollars were spent. And with that.
On those, on those grant, what's our process on reviewing that they, I mean, I know we got one. Just explain to me.
So they submit their, their final report to me. Then I go through and I review the cost, make, look at what their budget versus their proposed budget was, what their project ended up being. So if it makes it in here to the court packet, there were no issues with it. If there was an issue, I would probably, I would add it.
Review.
Yeah. But yeah, I go through and review them and ask questions if I need clarification on things.
If there's a compliance issue, then those are the ones that show up lower on the agenda.
They would be down somewhere to discuss. Yeah. So.
Okay, let's move into 4.0. This is the revised consent agenda. Again, the pooled item 4.1, which were the minutes. Added a new item 4.8, which was consider approval of public transportation division grant number 35066 extension to June 30th, 2026. Did you guys have any questions?
And just that new 4.8 is for, if their vehicle purchase grant that they had, they weren't able to purchase vehicles within last fiscal, within the last fiscal year. So this extends their ability to purchase vehicles until 2026 through that grant. That's what that one is for.
So I think ODOT is recognizing that we approve it, Shania goes to buy it, it's already off the lot.
Yeah.
So and then you wait another two months before there's one on the lot and then we approve it. Shania goes to buy it, it's off the lot.
And we are in the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Then the one thing I wanted to know with the extra grant for the $107,000 coming from business Oregon for the
Background.
Lottery money. Is that going to offset the match? Gilmore County has to come up with the 418. Will that be part of that?
So that This is for the Fairgrounds project.
I know.
The other, the one that's in there for the match is for the Bus Tamar project. So that's separate.
But I thought it said in there that it was going to be used on the bus part. No, it said on the event center.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And that's the grant that's we have to put in for, have to put invoices in and they'll reimburse us, although they are giving us
About $55,000 upfront.
Yeah. So that should show up in July sometime.
Just had too much going on up there and I got confused.
Yeah, join the crowd.
Yeah, can we already have the million sitting there?
And I think we're supposed to report on that million here for soon too, of what we spent over that million.
So we shouldn't be upset because the legislature didn't do a bunch more funding for the background? You got a bunch of trying to figure out.
I'm really hoping that they let the cap off the lottery funds for the operating, you know, regular playgrounds, operating, yearly operating excess.
Sounds like that's ongoing discussion.
I really wish that that would happen.
It might hit some of the false stuff.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
And moved down seconded that we approved the consent agenda, which was amended and includes consider approval of July bills coming review, consider re-acquaintment of Brent Benton Court Road Committee effective July 5th, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Consider approval of county fairgrounds capital improvements grant agreement with Oregon Business Development Department. Consider approval of public transportation division 5310 grant agreement number 35460 with ODOT. Consider approval of grants, the middle request for emergency management performance grant. Consider approval of public transportation division grant number 35574 with ODOT. And consider approval of public transportation division grant agreement number 35066 extension to June 30th, 2026. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Okay. Moving on to item 5.1 under unfinished business is consider approval of Dillon County Transportation Bus Barn Design and Project Management Proposal. So I will do the overview. Do you want to add on? Okay. So earlier this year, as you guys recall, we got word that the public transportation department is slated to receive a 1.6 and change million dollar grant from ODOT. This is to construct a new bus barn facility and to house the department's fleet. Let's see here. We just approved the grant agreement just one second ago. And this, the facility is going to be placed on county property right now. It's slated to go across from the fairgrounds. And so north of the exhibit halls and things like that. I'm just working out the exact place. And construction right now is slated to begin next spring, so 2024. In order to receive the 1.6 million dollar grant, the county was required to provide 25% match. So we're expecting the overall building to be around 2 million. So Jeff Shaw at Piller Consulting did the initial engineering and cost estimate for Shania to be able to submit the grant agreement. And what you have before you is a proposal for him to move forward with doing the detailed design and then providing the project management services for the project. If we were to approve it, it would come out of the capital projects budget. There's plenty in there because we've we've put a lot of funds in for both the event center and then any other thing that came up. And, and then we would also count that towards the 25% match that we're required to come up with.
How much ground is the county own on the north side of that road? You didn't know was all.
It's the grassy area right up to where the fill.
So it used to be some horny barns in there, didn't it?
Yeah.
That's where the paddocks.
Yeah.
They're by the cemetery.
Highway to the cemetery, I think. So like where Jeff Farms would be the line.
I think it's as deep as the cemetery.
Okay.
So that it's, is that considered in the urban bug boundary? Is that what it is? So yeah, and I think one of the things we're exploring and Jeff may have already talked to Catherine about is is actually seeing about getting it annexed in. We're going back and forth on the water and sewer and what's going to be the best option.
For an accident. What do you?
Well, you can't have sewer, I would have to say. Yeah. So if they want to.
So in order to use the city sewer, it would need to be annexed. And I, and it, I think the other issue is right now, if it stays in county, it's, I think it's EFU. And so there's some planning issues on the
If it's annexed in and becomes under the city plan and that stuff all goes away.
It's simpler.
Simpler.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we've done in Arlington. We're a property is the simplest way to go.
Yeah. So
I think it was our understanding too. It was going to be located closer to Highway 19.
Yeah, it's on the corner closer to the highway. I actually said at first that I wanted it farther, closer to the cemetery because I was afraid of it to being, I wanted to have it parking available across from the event center because it's going to be right across from, you know, for the overpark parking. But then Jeff was like, oh, they'll be plenty parked. Yeah. So anyhow, so I kind of gave in on that situation. So. But it is closer to the highway.
Yeah. Down in that corner.
Closer than 19.
Yes.
Yes. Questions about this?
I move to approve the bus barn design and project management proposal from Piller Consulting in the amount of up to 92,650 as presented.
Second.
So moved and seconded that we approved the bus barn design and project management proposal from Piller Consulting in the amount of up to $92,650 as presented. Is there further discussion? All this in favor?
All right.
I'm any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go into 5.2, which was added. This is consider approval of revised 2023, 2024 premium agreement with RadComp Technologies. And Delaney's going to get into the details. Before we do, I just want to have a comment that I think people are going to look at this and, and it's an eye popping number. But also keep in mind what happened in Curry County. And when they did not have adequate cybersecurity and lost every computer system that they have and basically shut down county government for what, three months in county?
Yes.
And
I think they told us they were at 2 million in county.
Every
Of costs.
Yeah. And I wonder if that even factors in idle employees who are sitting there not able to access systems that they need to be able to, to do their work.
Well, and having to go back to doing everything vapor.
So with that, I will let Delaney kind of walk through, turn it over to her and have her walk through what, what they, what you have before you and kind of, it was truly Curry County situation that precipitated this request.
So after that, I gave the updated last court meeting. We've put some new policies in, in-house that have slowly been, kind of get rolling up. We did some, added some anti-fishing programs, things like that. But there's not, this is like the next step in that. We've done all we can with where we are currently. So RadComp and I met and then they went over this with me. It, the revised agreement is one pays per device instead of per user, which also, which is part of the reason for the increase. There are, there are more user, there are more devices than we have users because some users use multiple devices. But it helps enhance the coverages for backup and firewall services. And so for the first three months, it will be billed at, well, I should look at it. So they will bill us totally for $11,570.2 for the first three months. And then it will go up to after that, $13,919.98. Part of that, it comes from two different areas in the budget. For just RadComp's services, the amount with the new agreement would be one, about 160,000. We currently have that filled for 100, not billed, budgeted for 107,000 in the budget. Which is why just their services, the increased cost would be around $53,000. The other items on there, on their invoice, which is the enable backups, Microsoft, Sophos, and Nova4, those come up from our technology and software line item in the budget and those would be covered without any increases to our budget. And so really the main increase would just become from RadComp's increased enhanced services with their network monitoring and the server and servers.
Does this require supplementary?
It isn't one, if this isn't, their stuff is in 10199. So I think that'll be, we might have to look at that closer to the budget next year. And see where we're at, if we need to do a supplemental budget for that particular line item, but I'll, if this proves, I'll work with Nate.
Yeah.
And so in this
So we originally budgeted 107 and this will be almost 160.
Yeah, for total or all of it, including the software and things like that, it's around $200,000 for the year.
That's a lot of money.
We don't have any choice.
But the, so part of the reason RadComp is presenting this as well is their goal is to if or when we have a cyber attack within Dillon County, they would like to have it back up and running in two to three days. That is, so that's part of the reason why I, they're also preparing a hardware upgrade quote that'll bring back at a later court meeting because some of our devices and servers and networks are out of date. But that's their ultimate goal is with all of this stuff is that we would only be down for three days at the most.
Now, this is below the amount we need to back then.
Yeah.
So, and you said something about that the as far as the server, that updating those is kind of due to the fact that it can't even get in.
Some of, some of the servers and switches and things like that, RadComp has still not been able to gain access to because Acttec doesn't know how to get into them either. So Acttec was, Acttec was unable to provide RadComp with access to things because Acttec doesn't know what the passwords are. So and so that will be part, those things are going to be part of what I bring back at a later date, those hardware upgrades. Because RadComp has said it would probably cost more money for them to spend the time breaking into them and figuring out exactly where they're at than it would be to just replace machines.
Yeah, and you'd probably be a lot better system doing that anyway.
And RadComp, one thing that was Brad Comp and I discovered is through NACO, National Association of Counties, they offer a free cybersecurity attack simulation. And since we are NACO members, we're eligible for that. So once we make the upgrade, RadComp would like to have NACO come in and simulate a cybersecurity attack so we can kind of figure out exactly if, where those improvements helped and if there's other areas after that that we could also look at approving.
We've been looking as well at, we currently we're all on one network. That's problematic. And so we've been looking at, are we able to break up the network? So there's different. So for instance, maybe the county court might get attacked, but wouldn't bring down the entire courthouse kind of thing. If the sheriff's office got attacked, it would be on a separate network. So wouldn't bring down the susser's office trying to segregate them so that somebody would have to attack multiple departments in order to bring down the entire county.
That Curry County was all on one network. And so that's why everything went down.
Once they thought it, they could shut down everything. So we're talking about.
Technically explain the networks. Can the neck, can you do different networks through the same provider?
Yeah. So it'll, it'll just be kind of like the network and like the server. So everyone will have their own like little network server area that is blocked. And so it'll be probably based by department. But that way, if they break into one, that doesn't automatically give them a backdoor into everyone. Cause that's
That's a really good idea.
Yes. And that's part of, again, the, we're quote, they're giving us this enhanced service agreement because that is the ultimate goal is to get it. So that's where the level they're monitoring at is that.
So this is going to cover all that I get there?
Yes. So this is, this would cover all of that and then there will just be
The actual hardware.
The hardware, the actual things that the physical things.
Is there any legislation that went on that probably died in distress here?
Not yet, but I would not be surprised if there
To help the counties?
If there is after that.
The DMV got hacked.
90% of DMV.
I was talking about the dollars.
I know, babe. You would think they'd go, hello, wake up.
Oh, that's cute. No.
No, no, they just, fear you guys all go on and check your receipt.
And the reason for the two different amounts listed on there for the monthly invoice split is that they're giving they are taking off about $2,300 for the first three months to make sure that that is everything that we need. And then after those three months, that 2,300 would be added on to the invoice, but it could also be less. Like we're just kind of
This would be the top.
Yeah, if the top would be the 13,919.
Questions about this?
I've asked mine. I mean, we just, one of those were handcuffs.
And to your question about procurement, so we did the formal procurement process when we hired them. And so I think our attorney would treat this as like a change order because we've been through a, a formal process. So now that we've selected them, then as additional costs come on, we're just approving it as a change order.
Cause it has, the cost of our initial agreement has changed a little bit too, with just Microsoft licensing, we've added more Microsoft licenses as we've gone on, more devices, things like that, so. It's kind of, uh, it lives and breathes a little bit, so.
I was at the, I didn't realize how local Red Cone was. And was it the Glenwood Rodeo two or weeks ago? They all know, we had to start counting personally, man, they got a lot of good reviews there.
He's actually, uh, um, he's also there. The Assistant Chief for the White Salmon Fire Department, so he is out fighting fire right now. Uh, he, I had a meeting with him on Monday and he came in just for a little bit and he's like, alright, I gotta go back out.
That's what he would refer to as a painless.
He's, and Rad Comp has been really, really great through all of this, like just really spot on, just putting things in, coming up with suggestions, like. It has been a really good IT change.
And then went to Curry County too, right?
Yeah.
I know, I know that uh Humantola County sent their IT people there too, so they're making a bunch of changes too. Nobody wants to be in this. I mean, the, the, it was jaw dropping what happened with them down there.
So, the other, the only concern I have is, um, after getting the bid from Brad on for the spare boards. Computer, um, do we? I, I feel like there's some things that they were really kind of overpriced on that we could get cheaper.
And you can abs, I mean, that's, yeah, there's no, we don't have to order devices through them.
Okay, that's what I'm just curious about, because some of us do like our curb monitors.
Yeah, and I, and yeah, and so, yeah, that's just, it's, it's some of that is just like the ease of being able to have them. And then they just bring it all and they do all of the setup and things like that as soon as they have it all. Um, but there's no, we don't have an agreement with them that we only order computers or things through them.
Okay, I think as long as you're just checking in to make sure whatever device.
When you order your devices, just let them know, hey, we're looking to order this.
And we'll get our own monitors or.
Or even your own computers, whatever, yeah, just keep them in the loop, but there's no requirement.
Yeah, as long as it's compatible with all the systems and security measures, I, that piece isn't.
And I know the guys have their MDTs and stuff like that for the cars or car a little bit differently, but.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Any questions about this one?
No, I would move to approve the revised premium agreement with Rad Comp Technologies for two hundred and nine thousand three hundred and thirty eight dollars and twelve cents.
I second it. The move to end seconded that we approved the revised premium agreement with Rad Comp Technologies for two hundred and nine dollars, two hundred. Two hundred and nine thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars and twelve cents, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Hi, I'm any opposed, motion carries. Okay, under new business, we'll go into six point one, consider approval of resolution number R twenty twenty three dash ten. Declaring a state of drought emergency in Gillon County. Do not see verb on here, so do we want to just, do you want to walk through it?
Yeah, so it is time for us to declare drought, um, we'd initially looked at doing it, I think, back in April or March sometime and. Of course, it mean, moisture came, so no need to declare drought then, um, but it, um. Her, um, reached out and set the supporting documentation for us to do it. The resolution is prepared, and once we do this, it qualifies us for getting a drought declaration from the governor. Help, um, our local producers access state entitled drought program dollars.
Usually we submitted with Chris, she helps us get it uh in there, the governor declares that it then goes on to. Our federal partners, they also have to declare it, and then, um, at that point, then the grant. Dollars that are related to losses are open up for producers, so we still have a couple more steps, but this is the first one. Questions about it or questions for Delaney and Chris?
I move to adopt the resolution number R twenty twenty three dash ten as presented.
Second.
The move and seconded that we adopt resolution number R twenty twenty three dash ten as presented, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi, hi, any opposed, motion carries? Okay, consider approval of resolution number R twenty twenty three dash eleven, adopting a remote work policy. Delaney, Miranda?
I'm pointing the ball. Um. Remote work, um, Miranda has done a lot of job updating job descriptions for jobs that are hybrid eligible, and so the second piece of that. Is kind of listing the requirements for when they are hybrid eligible, what does your remote work policy? And the requirements for when our employees are remote working.
Do you want us to walk you through the policy, the highlights of the policy a little bit?
A little bit.
Okay, so. So at a high level, we try to have flexibility for the one off. Like short term, hey, my kid's sick this afternoon, can I work from home for a few hours? And, and allow those to continue to just be approved by supervisors being basically notified and checked in. So, um, and we just call those informal ones, so if there's inclement weather, if there's a sick family member at home, any of those kinds of things. Supervisors can still just continue to authorize those via text or email or phone call, uh, you know, whatever works best for the supervisor and employee. For, um, for longer term, and by that we define it as longer than a weekend duration. And we have a more formal process, so there'll be an actual form. Um, that will be, um, filled out between the employee and the supervisor, which basically is setting out. Here is the schedule, here's the expectations in terms of checking in, you know, you're going to check in every morning and let me know what you're doing or whatever. You're going to give me a phone call, whatever that might look like, that is completely up to the supervisor's discretion in terms of. What their comfort level is for checking in and things like that, so we didn't prescribe any of that. Um, there's also information in there as far as what the county covers and what the employee is responsible for when they're working remotely, so. We provide the computer equipment, we'll provide some of the office supplies depending on what the need is, so we may supply like printer paper and things like that, that's up to the supervisor. Um, um, but there are other things that, you know, like the internet, um, service itself, the employees expected to provide. And so there's, um, that spells that out, um.
How did that, and? Has security covered in all of this?
So, that's part of it, so, um, part of, there's a list of per eligibility, um. So what we're saying in the policy is the employee has to successfully complete all of the required cybersecurity trainings, and then there's some provisions. That go in a little bit deeper, um, in terms of like if someone's on a public wifi. Um, what things they need to be using, basically, so you can't be on a public wifi and then like leaving. Access to the server open, um, so there's some things in there that we would expect if someone's working remotely and not. In a secure network in their home kind of thing, um, that we would probably. Honestly, look at going over that with them, um, just as a reminder, um, as we do our cybersecurity trainings, I think it's probably something we could have Rad Comp also. A touch on. Um, so there's things like the VPN and other things that are secured transfers, um, that as, so long as the employee is using them appropriately. Um, and not say leaving their computer unattended while they get up to go to grab coffee or something, um, should provide. A similar level of protection as if they were sitting in the courthouse, so, um. It also makes clear in here that, um. That employees, like the computers that are being sent home are for the employee only, that can't be used by. Family members to do homework or other things, um, again, for a security, uh, risk, um, management. And let's see what else is in there. I think those are the high points.
I'm ready for the informal request, how did we, were we going to do that as like a calendar invite or outlook, that our thought was behind us?
And I think, I mean, for some, um, departments, I think we gave some flexibility, so. You know, supervisors can kind of decide what works best for them, you know, what we tend to do in the county courts. Departments is ask them to send us a calendar invite, so the supervisor has it on their calendar and the employee has it on their calendar. Um, for other offices that maybe have one employee, maybe they prefer to do it another way, um, so. Um, and then the other thing to note, just for employees who are listening and others, is that there are some eligibility requirements in here, so. Um, you have to have been a employee for six months, you need to complete all the cybersecurity trainings. You need to demonstrate that while you're onsite, you have excellent working habits, so that. You know, we have some assurance that you're going to be able to manage your workload when you don't have, um, that constant accountability. Um, as the commissioners remember, like, we've been updating all the job descriptions, so if your job description does not say that you're eligible for remote work. So, most of Dewey's guys, gonna be no, um, Daryl's gonna be a no, um, so. We've tried to capture working with the supervisors, whether it's, uh. Whether it's feasible legitimately for them to do essential functions outside of their normal work sites. Um, so, um, and then for, um, longer term ones, they need to come to an agreement on the remote work agreement. In order to have that approved. Um.
And then once they're established, they'll be, um, annually, we'll check up unless something comes up that we created. Just see where the stats are loaded.
Yeah. And we have had some employees who very successfully, you know, during the pandemic, worked from home, um, chat had an employee that. Basically worked from home during, for almost two years, so, um, so it can, I think. Especially coming out of the pandemic, we've seen that it can work and often can help employees juggle multiple demands that they have, so. Um. Questions?
No, I just think that employees should go to work.
Or, you want to, I'm going to find it. Um, I need to approve resolution number. R twenty twenty three dash eleven as presented.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded that we approve, uh, resolution number R twenty twenty three dash eleven as presented, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Hi, any opposed, motion carries, okay. Six point three is consider approval of grant extension request, we see of Condon, Frontier Plaza and Port of Arlington, Delaney.
Alright, so we have some of our grants that were awarded for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three that have not yet been extended. And we have some requests for extension for the city of Condon, we have two. For their capital investment grant for the Condon School District Street and Sidewalk Installation Project. Their project completion has been delayed, and so they're asking for an extension until September twenty twenty three.
A couple months, yes.
And then for their capital investment pro, grant for their meter upgrade project, they have just, they're finalizing the RFP for the project, right Catherine? And then now they'll go out to bid, so they're hoping that by next June thirtieth, that they will have that project completed. Port of Arlington, um, they've got their capital investment grant for the former Condon, Condon Grade School Project. The progress is, the project is progressing, um, they just need some additional time to be able to apply for the Brownfield Grant. And want to utilize the grant that they received from us as a match, so they're asking until June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And then cost Frontier Plaza is a more unique one. Um, this, they received an operational support grant from us last year, um, if they. Stressed that it would be a one-time request as they had lost some grant funding, well, good news for them that they were, um, awarded some unaddition. Unexpected additional funding and got some, picked up some other funding, so they have approximately thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars remaining. From the grants they were awarded last year, they are requesting that they are able to keep that thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars and use it. To offset operational support, but operational funds for this year until December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
And we, um, just as a reminder, in the budget this year have a line item for these kinds of carryover grants.
Uh huh.
So we have a specific one, um, so that we don't, we're not in danger of over committing the competitive grants. And so I think we had planned for a lot of these to carry over already in the budget, um.
I think I've budgeted one point six million in that line item for all of these. Um, specifically to be carried over, we have extensions received from some of them already, so that's why those ones aren't in here, these are just for the ones that don't have. A current extension. I mean, the frontier castle one, normally the process is that they have remaining funds that is sent back to the county. If they don't expend all of their funds.
And they're just asking to keep them for six months and see where.
Yeah, they want to use it to cover wages and mileage, just like they were scheduled to for last year, they just hope that, they just would like to use that for this year.
For their next six months, basically. Questions about those? One, I would just also like to just say to the grantees, thank you for working with us and not just. We've had.
Yeah.
Historically, we've had people just do and, um, and then we find out about it later, so I appreciate the proactive, like, working with Delaney to.
Absolutely.
Find a solution for, uh, as folks are working through their projects, so.
Well, yeah, regarding, I would move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three grant extension request as discussed. And authorize county judge to prepare and execute amended grant agreements reflecting the same.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we have approved the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three grant extension request as discussed. And to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute amended grant agreements reflecting the same, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I, any opposed, motion carries? Okay, six point four is consider approval of vehicle purchase for Gillum County Maintenance Departments. Daryl is here. Which of you wants to kick this off?
I think Daryl would love to kick it off.
Yeah, go ahead, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, with my maintenance truck that's, um, going on seventeen years old. Um. I decided to budget this year for, for the, the next fiscal year to replace a crap. I, um, budgeted fifty three thousand, um, from just the preliminary research that I'd done last year. And then I reached out to several dealerships to get bids for pickup that fits the requirements for a department, um. Extra room for the tool and equipment storage, six foot pickup bed at a minimum, uh, four by four in a towing package. Um, the bids are received and, um, they're all actually pretty close, um, but I would recommend, since it's all basically the same. Um, I would recommend the cheapest one or the cheaper one. Um, uh, the Ram fifteen hundred from Lithia Chris, Chrysler, Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Ben. For forty eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety seven cents.
Did it deliver it?
No. But I could get a ride from, uh, transportation, I'm sure, and. Oh, yeah, you could pick it up, whatever you want to do. I don't think I'll kind of check that faster. Whatever.
Do with the old one.
Uh, we decided to probably sell it, have the sheriff's department put it up for bid.
Okay, so we move forward with this, I'll probably see a surplus request. Uh, in the next.
That's a lot of years to get out of, right?
Fifty three thousand is what I'd come up with last year for the budgets.
So do you have air conditioning in this one?
It is, the guy kind of laughed at me because I says, I don't need nothing fancy, I, I want four wheel drive and air conditioning. And it's like, what do you mean air conditioning, and how old is your old vehicle?
I don't even think you have the option.
Power lock, I, I know it sounds silly, just power locks and windows, i- it, it's really not a big deal, but it is hard, I'm kind of short, so it's like the reason. It just, it's a lot of little things, it'll be nice, just.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't care about, you know, we don't, we use it for work, so it doesn't have to be pleasurable, but it'd be nice to have air conditioning for a couple months out of here. If I had to choose, I'd, I'd rather have heating because I get cold a lot either.
I like to turn my heated seats on and then turn the air conditioner on, so I get cool and get the best of it.
That's like eating a buttered finger and drinking a diet Pepsi. Well, I moved here through the purchase of the twenty twenty three Ram fifteen hundred from Lithia Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Ben. In the amount of forty eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety seven cents.
I second it, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the purchase of a twenty twenty three Ram fifteen hundred from Lithia Chrysler Jeep. Dodge Ram of Benz in the amount of forty eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety seven cents. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
I, any opposed, motion carries? Go for it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I seen bright camera today, I thought you were going to come and say. Let's run with that.
Seventeen years, I think you got, uh, ideas out of it.
That's the last day of the host.
I know, it's that old, just gonna, yeah. I know, it's that old. Just gonna, yeah, you never know. Okay, six point five is consider approval of equipment purchase for Gillum County Road Department. Do we, do you want to do this one?
This is for our, uh, our finish roller for our paving. We've invested in the paver. Uh, last year we had a miserable time. We, we got a roller. Our paving got extended. We lost that roller and then had to find another one. Um, it broke down, so we ended up with one that was way too small. They finally brought us the right one. This year I got on it in advance. Got the, got the roller. Basically special ordered it to get what we want. It has offset drum for finishing our projects and stuff. It is a source well. So we did that. Um, I've contacted Caterpillar. Ham are the only other ones that really provide rollers like that. They did not have anything available at this time. So, and by going into July, this purchase would be made in in the, what, twenty-three, twenty-four budget year?
Have to be now.
Yeah, have to be now. So my, uh, my budget is, is five hundred thousand.
So how did we not get it in the twenty-two, twenty-three?
It just, we were, we were right in the middle of paving and busy and I was just renting the machine to make sure it was what we wanted. And then things just happened too fast. That was, that was my mistake that we didn't get it in this.
So you guys rented it?
I, I, it's rented up to date.
So do they?
The rental, the rental cost, uh, was eighty percent goes towards the purchase price. Yeah.
And then when, uh, there was no issues over the Dewey selling.
We'll need to get a probably a revised sales agreement.
Right, right.
And then once that comes in, I can have it.
Yes, no, I will, I will get that.
We need to be.
Right. Yes, no. I, I spoke with the, uh, um, the sales rep last week. Yeah, he was gonna, it, it has to go through corporate to get back to us. So I'll get ahold of him as soon as the meeting's over.
Question for you?
I moved to the twenty twenty-three Dyna Pack Roller for a hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and modern machinery.
Um, so do we need to say anything about ending a new so agreement?
Cause what I'm assuming, I want, will the amount be less?
It should, the amount should be less.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know. Um. I think you could still do, had if you would amend yours till up to a hundred and eighty-two, and then if it comes in underneath that.
Yeah, it'll come under for sure.
Um, so I have another question. So did the rental get in last year's budget then for?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah. And it, and it's out of a completely different line item.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded that we approved the purchase of the twenty twenty-three Dyna Pack Roller in the amount of up to a hundred and eighty-two thousand, uh, a hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and one dollars for modern machinery as presented. Except for their discussion. All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi, I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Uh, consider approval of road department summer interns pay rates.
The work that the, the summary interns do is it's hot, it's very dirty, um, and it's hard work. Um, I've always paid them fifteen dollars an hour. Just because of everything, I just bumped it to eighteen this year. Um, I've, I've just made up the difference in my budget. The kids are working hard. Um, they're learning. They, they help Gary, they help me, um, shovel asphalt. They're working on trucks. Uh, they're teaching them to weld right now in the shop, so they're doing very well.
Who, who all have you got?
Uh, we have Megan Amont, Blake Carnine, and, uh, Jaden Havens.
The welding, was that something that we, is that on our bully certificate? Are they able to do that work according to our bully certificate?
It's, it, they, they learn it in school.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you do have to meet the bowling certificate to make sure.
Yeah. Um, I don't, I don't remember that being on the.
Seen those certificates, but I remember being on.
Yeah, it's.
I don't recall it being on the bully's certificate. I would have to find them or file it away, but I don't think, um, Julie had mentioned welding.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just mostly what they're doing is just work.
Yeah, you need to quite get that clarified.
Okay, alright. And it's not, it's not a constant deal. They're just.
You get into an injured employee on something that's, and it's gonna be different from a sixteen-year-old.
Right.
And I guess, oh, sorry, Pat.
Go ahead. I just want to make sure by that and don't put him in a position that's not allowed.
Good.
Yeah. Amy, do you want to, did you want to jump in?
My only other thought is I don't really, um, have thoughts on the pay. My only question is, and I could be wrong, but I think what the county allotted for interns is coming out of one line item. So how would we separate if we've allowed thirteen twenty? And Dewey is gonna pay eighteen, how, I mean, can Ellen just separate that and the wages? Like, how?
That's, that's done in the clerk's office.
I think she's done that in the past.
We've done that in the past.
Okay.
To, I've got, I've got the part-time line item in my budget and that, that picks up the, the balance.
Okay.
That's just an internal.
Yeah.
I think previously, like, there was a check cut from that line item to the road department. And then the, the full amount came out of the department's line items technically when they were paid. But it was done like an AP memo from one to the other. I think it's how they did it last year.
Still do that?
Uh, I would, I think so.
Ellen, well.
Yeah, we can figure it out.
Yeah, Ellen's already got it worked out, I thought.
I do. I do because I, I feel like we established the pay rate as the court. We're running all of these kids through an internship program that is hosted by or run by the juvenile department. I have an issue with us after we've got people on board and it said what we think is the appropriate rate, saying this subset of kids, because we are employing a lot of interns all over, gets, gets more. And I understand it works hard. I also know when we had an O Y C C crew, they were also doing hard work and you were paying them minimum wage. So to me, I worry, I don't like that we have different departments doing different things without checking in with the county court. I feel like we set up parameters. We gave Amy marching orders that we wanted us an efficient project, uh, program. We didn't, we wanted, uh, uniformity and how the kids were trained, all of those things we were asking her to do. And to me, by doing this, we're basically saying, except like certain departments have different rules. And so you don't have to play by the rules that were set by, uh, to me, like this, I, I want to get away from us doing this. So the whole point, I think, of these internships is to give kids real-world work experience. And so part of what they're getting, yes, they're getting paid. But to me, the bigger thing they're getting is experience on, do I like this job? Is this something I want to do? Is this a skill set that I can put on my resume later, uh, that may help me get into college or a trade school or my next thing? So I, I feel like we set what we thought was appropriate. Um, and I don't like deviating after the fact. I think it also raises, now that we're under a pay equity situation, we have to really justify when we have differentials in pay and particularly when, when we have interns who are making more than getting close honestly to what it, what the bottom scale of our union employees are at this rate. Uh, that creates all kinds of other issues throughout the rest of the apparatus. And it's not that I don't value what they're doing. And I know that it's hard work, but I also think like we set this program up int- intentionally this year to be thoughtful about having the kids have a consistent experience. And what I don't want frankly is all the other interns that were hired at thirteen twenty, all of the kids that are working downtown that are at thirteen twenty. I mean, we have a lot of kids running through these programs and why are we picking these three kids? Some of which, by the way, have connections to county employees more than what we're paying everybody else that's participating in the program.
Well, I, I guess that, um, I don't feel like that I knew all the details when we approved the way start with, that we didn't, there was information I didn't know.
And that's part of the reason I'm bothered by it. I wish we would have had that information when.
I did, in, in the past, those have just been my part-time employees. They weren't run through this, this program. And the program, yeah.
I think it's really bad comparison to O Y C C with what.
No, it's completely different.
Even from a supervisory standpoint, they're not the same thing. They don't work the same way. They don't work the same. I've seen you O Y C C kid.
Yeah.
Not working.
And, and as far as the connection to another employee, I have separated that. That, that kid stays with me so that he's not supervised that way.
I mean, I, I get all of that.
And then the other thing I would say, just to say my piece of it is, how many other departments have budgeted for part-time?
It's. So it runs through the county courts. And part of the reason that we're not having departments using interns in this way is we decided as a county court that we wanted, part of we, part of the thing that we wanted these kids to have to do was go through job training. We wanted them to have consistent onboarding. So we wanted them to go through Miranda and go through Amy and have a consistent. And so if we open up and just decide, okay, departments get to now have part-time. Well, one, we didn't approve ha- hiring part-time people outside of this. Like, we don't have a job description for them if they're not running through the internship department. And if they're part-time, are we opening it up to the broader community? I mean, if there's a legit need, like, hey, we're paving, we need additional hands. So I want to bring in part-time people. Okay, then let's create a job description, advertise for it, set a, set a pay rate. And if it's kids that are applying for it and you want to hire for the summer, that's one thing. But what we're, we're mixing two things. So if the thing is, is that the road department needs part-time help during the summer, we, we need Miranda to develop a job description of what that looks like. We need to price it in the market and see what that is. And we need to advertise it for it and allow adults as well as people who are, you know, could be youth to apply for it. If we're running it through the internship program, then we need to treat them like interns and they all get treated the same. So I think there's an avenue for what you're, you guys are getting at, but this is not it. And coming in after the fact and saying, now we want to change the rules for.
Well, it's not after the fact. It's, it's the county court changed the rules without giving everybody the rulebook.
No.
Yes, yes. Nobody ever told me that, that you were going to change these things like this. I've been doing this for twenty-seven years. It's a way I've done it every year for twenty-seven years.
You were notified. We approved this several months ago. Lani sent an email to every department before we even hired a single intern saying this is how the program is going to be run this year. Let us know if you have questions. The county court will set the rate. She sent it to you. I was on it.
Okay.
You got it. So did all the other departments that normally have it. So I, I don't like having to come in after the fact. It appears these kids were already promised that amount without county court approval. So this is why I have an issue. Like, if, if you have a need, come to us and talk to us about the need and let us address it appropriately. There's a process for these things, but we can't have it both ways. You can't say they're interns. And so the county picks up, the court picks up a portion of it, but you get to play by different rules. If the need is, I need part-time people, then there's a process for that, which is a job description. And Miranda doing a survey, uh, salary study to know what we should be paying them and offering it up widely to the public and going through a formal recruitment process, which the kids could apply for frankly, if they're qualified. There's no reason you can't hire somebody in fifteen. But if you're going to be using this funding, these are the rules.
So I would kind of the impression with our conversation, you had one of them, but I do have part-time line item budget. It wasn't separate, wasn't, that's all. That was stable, was not what I went with.
Yeah.
He had it in his budget. How many other departments have it in their budget?
But even if they have a part-time, there's still a process, right? Shania has the part-time drivers. There's a process where we hire them. It's open and competitive. There's a job description attached to it. So from what I understand, we're not running an internship program. Like, there's part-time line item, right, in Dewey's budget. So do you see how like mixing them creates problems? Because we have like forty-some kids that are all being paid minimum wage. And now we have these three that are being paid more, which, if it had been advertised differently, treated as a different program, that would be a different thing. But I don't like the inconsistency and I don't like.
I don't necessarily like the inconsistency either, but we were kind of in transition. Obviously, communication thing, well, commitments were made and I struggle with that.
So I have a question.
Thanks.
So what do you do about, um, one of Dewey's people, um, that worked for him last year and already made that higher wage last year and then, and then comes back and works for him? I mean, you could, I, I, I don't know if it's against the law or not, but you couldn't take her and drop her back down, pay her less this year than what she made last year.
We would have to go back to the attorneys, I think, because it would be a new recruitment and a new job. Can, if it had been continuous employment, no.
Okay.
So because there's a gap and there's clearly a, a beginning and ending of a, you know, uh, the position, I think you can adjust in between. But I, I mean, I don't like, I don't like any of this, honestly. I, what I, what drives me crazy is when we set up processes and those processes are not followed and they're not consistent. Uh, because we end up having to do a lot of cleanup work in the county court office when we find out after the fact that promise has been made without checking in with, with us. So I'm not inclined to clean up this one, to be honest. Cause what, so what were they told they were going to get paid to begin with? Was it fifteen dollars an hour or?
Eight, eighteen. Yeah, for the type of work.
Cause as a community commissioner, I wish that, you know, it would have came to us and said, we're going to do this, except for the road department ones and they're on a different.
Right. And I, and that, that I'll take, I'll take full responsibility for that.
Cause I do have a problem like that.
Well, I'll need to go talk to Ellen and have her make sure she adjusts them back and then I'll go visit with all three of them. And tell them they're not going to make that.
Yeah, I think the hardest part I have with this whole thing is I would hate to ever hire an employee and tell them I'm gonna pay something to go back.
Yeah, well.
Tell them it's less.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a hard time with an employer ever doing that.
But the other thing is, is how, how it makes us look as we pay the other forty kids or whatever we're paying them thirteen, twenty. And then those three kids got.
I, in my mind, Lee, I can separate what they're doing and justify that, but I get the consistency and everything else and procedures. And we have, I mean, we have some concerns all the time about not knocking the eyes and crossing the teeth. We talked about it a lot and it, it causes more difficulty for me than it does anybody else in this court. It causes more difficulty for me than it does anybody else in this court. And it would just be helpful if we get out in front of that stuff, you know, and be ahead of it.
So related to that, commissioners, when we set the rate of thirteen twenty. We set it effective July first, because that's when the um that's when the minimum wage increases. Is there an appetite by the courts to to do that retroactively so that is June most? Because we have a bunch. Normally, our kids would not have started until July, so it's not an issue this year because it's a better organized program.
What did we do? We we started them and then we're going to raise them with the state.
Because normally our interns, like let's just say don't start till July one, so the court traditionally.
I get all that. I just didn't know. I don't remember approving the lower rate.
Well, because the lower rate we set last June, last June for twenty 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 three, twenty 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 three year. Yeah, so we just didn't to that last, so it's just a administrative thing that I overlooked when I had. When I made that briefing for you, interview.
Well, I would be in favor of retro that.
Thirty kids for their first paycheck will get the thirteen twenty because I think I misunderstood that and told all the kids they'd be paid thirteen twenty.
So it would be easier to register back for anything. But it's only five bucks an hour, then we're taking away from what we promised.
I know, and that's probably I've heard many times I've heard you that say. What's the procedure that we're supposed to be following?
Well, this is so new. All of this is, this is last two months. We can put this in the plan and it's different.
Well, and then I wonder too, because I was under the impression, and again, this has been a big learning for for me. Like, are the interns different than the kids working with the businesses? Because I told the businesses that we'll pay them thirteen twenty. But the businesses could opt to pay higher if they wanted because. The rest would be on their payroll. And so then I don't know if any of the businesses are doing that, but if they are, then. Then they're not all at thirteen twenty. And so then again, like. You know, I guess I would need to know to go back to the businesses and make sure that they are in fact only paying for thirteen twenty.
What would be the difference?
Well, and then if you have the kids that are working at places that they get tips.
And the difference is that it's public money versus not public money.
That is true too.
I mean, if I will throw this out here, I'm not exactly wild about this. If Dewey wants to pay them out of his budget. He would need to do the following. You would need to have a job description drawn up. You would need to advertise it. Those three kids are your top candidates. You would need to hire them. The court would have to sign off on the amount that they're being paid. But that is the process that would have to happen. So I could. Potentially get on board with something like that and then not being interns. But I don't, I mean, I want you to take away from doing like, we support you. When you come, there is not. I I can't remember a single thing that I have said no to that you have come and asked. But it drives me insane when we set up a process and then you don't follow it. You just do because you've done it twenty seven years. You just do it that way. And then. I spend a lot of time figuring out how to make the things that you've already decided. Work with our policies and procedures and I don't want to spend my time doing that. I don't want you to have to come in and hear me get after you about that.
I will, I will write up the job descriptions for for the part time help.
My for this year and we've all learned a lesson for next year and make sure we look at this, how we're going to structure and pay as we go into next year.
Yeah, because maybe that's. If you have employees like that, they just need to come straight out of Dewey's budget and not go through that program.
And then they would go through the regular employee training requirements with Miranda and we would need to treat them the same way we treat other part time employees. So. Our cooks, all of those people, they get on boarded through Miranda. It's a formal recruitment process. They have to do all their training, sign all their policies. That's fine to me to be able to do that. I mean, the city has seasonal workers too. That's not uncommon. But I don't like this blending and I'm going to go my own way kind of thing. And so to me, it that is a way to keep your promise. But actually follow a process. And so we would need to see like job descriptions and all of that. Like next meeting basically and retroactively approve them. Um it I don't like it. But I also don't want to be.
I appreciate your compromise, Liz.
I will, I will have everything written up and get it to. Jolie so she can correct my spelling and stuff so she can get it to Miranda for the job descriptions uh by next week. And then.
I need them to be on the twenty sixth.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have everything to you by then. And yeah. And then I would prefer to run my part time help through the road department, not through. This other program.
Yeah, I mean, that's I I'm okay with that as so long as we're following the same process that we would. I mean, I just want to confirm like. Miranda's the one that's the point person, making sure the recruitment is solid, they're on boarded consistently. They. They've gone through all of their trainings, all of their policies and procedures, because then they're actual full blown county employees. They're not interns. Which is.
And you could probably look at a larger pool of people because it not guarantee you're going to have the same.
Usually in the past, we we get, we get the return kids until they get to a certain age to where. They can venture out and and actually make more money. But the. I put the word out early and then sometimes I, you know, I have to go recruit myself in order to get to get help. Because it is, it's hot, it's dirty, it's. It's work. We work, so.
I don't disagree.
Part of why I'm struggling, because I know these kids are getting supervision.
Yeah, they're not wearing shorts.
Which I hope we're all doing throughout all the program because I don't know if that's all that's happening in the past.
I think they're, it's getting better. Okay, so I feel like we have a path forward for the three. And Dewey, if you can have, once you get a draft to Jolie, if you can have Jolie work with Miranda. To make sure it gets formatted, all of that kind of stuff, we can get it on the court's agenda. I think for now, because the county court has not technically approved it. So technically, they are still interns. So as a compromise, I think Ellen's going to have to run payroll at the thirteen. Twenty for this month.
Okay.
And then we could retroactively for those hours worked in June potentially fix it in their next paycheck. Um so does that work for you guys? So if you let the kids know, like, they're going to be a little short on the paycheck that goes out today or tomorrow. Um because Ellen's already loaded numbers and running, running payroll basically. And we haven't made a motion, so um but then we can retroactively clean up the financials for them.
I'll take care of it.
And then we will not let this happen.
I will not let this happen again. Okay, all right.
We aren't making a motion. We wait till.
Not on that one, but I do need a motion and there's one in your emails that Lainey sent over for retroactively doing the thirteen twenty to June first. Thanks, Dewey.
I moved to approve retroactively setting the pay rate for the Gillum County interns. To thirteen twenty effective June first, twenty twenty three.
Second. So moved and seconded that we approved retroactively setting the pay rate for the Gillum County interns to thirteen twenty effective June first, twenty twenty three. So further discussion, all those in favor, aye? Aye, any opposed? Motion, please. Okay, let's move into announcements and next meeting. So next county court meeting. For folks who are following at home. Because I think we have the wrong date on this one, right? Yes, we did, because we made that change after this was finalized, so twenty six, yeah. So we have some court um scheduling commitments uh conflicts um on the nineteenth. And so we are going to actually hold the second meeting for uh July on July twenty sixth, which is the fourth Wednesday. And we will not be having the August second meeting. So we're going to split the difference between the two and do the the meeting in between. Uh the weekend between. So it'll be, that one will be held in Arlington uh same time and on Zoom as well. And I think that is the only thing for announcements. Pat, what do you got going on?
Um the first thing that I want to begin on the agenda and schedule is. If if everybody's willing, is Mike McCarthy has done a presentation on SIPs agreements with the Chevy County Court. And I thought it would be beneficial to do that here. Um educated so with his perspective on the renewable side of SIPs agreements and also invite our district. So I just want to get that on the end of the schedule that he does. I'll have to get with you, Delaney, because he has some dates he's not available. And then and I know I don't have to, because their email went down at three and all of his emails are coming in my personal. I got to get into. So if we could do that, that would be great. I'm just been a while since I've had a regular meeting and then all the OC meetings and. Eastern Oregon caucus calls, it kind of slowed down, but they did do an after session call about coming back and what that was like and. Give us a little report on what did run through and what did not. If anybody has any input, Korea is working on their strategic plan, which we're going to have a meeting on that on the fourteenth. So if you have any input on that, if you'd like me to put in that process, I'm going to try to meet with Mike before that. Just I know that. The big thing for me is at some point in the near future, their revenue source is going to decrease considerably. Because again, county backs that load. And it and and my feeling is it's a good organization and they need to figure out how they're going to survive without it.
No, I'm not understanding what so.
What happened with Korea and its creation was created through funding or SIP agreements from the county's primary chairman and Gill. Membership. And I've gotten in here and can take Zach, I kind of remember, but if I if I if I remember correctly, this is a shock. Membership that's that really Korea's finance or how they fund it. Comes out of SIP agreements with Morrow and Sherman and Gill County. And Morrow and Sherman, I believe, are somewhere around fifteen thousand here. And Gill County is a hundred and eight right now. And our SIP agreements are going to twilight. Our SIP agreements are going to twilight and then they will no longer get that funding for our SIP agreements. So they're picking up other membership and there's there's concerns. Sometimes that is developed. We don't want to have a lot of power, pre-boarding developers. And how to keep that a community organization supporting counties. And, you know, how do they keep funding that going forward? They got. Some things to, you know, consider how we're going to get there.
And our funding to him runs out when?
Well, it'll be gradual depending on which SIPs agreements. Time, but there is written in SIPs agreements what that number, that percentage or dollar value is.
So each one rolls off, it'll diminish. So every every year they roll off, they'll be.
There'll be one that remains for a while and that will be a Montague one because it's fairly new. It's got a lot of years left, but it's not going to be enough to make a huge difference. Um and then but there there is, um Morrow County is working on a ten thousand acre solar farm right now. So potentially other counties and other SIP agreements can pick up some of that.
And they'll do that through a SIPs agreement when they do it?
Well, that's how, and I don't know exactly how that came about at the beginning. But it was kind of an afterthought, I think, on SIP agreements, if there's like, is that what you get?
My understanding of the history is that some will carry it was still around and was negotiating those and also representing Korea. And got those written into the SIP agreements that there would be guaranteed funding sources coming in. That's my understanding. I was not around then, but.
Um I did meet with. Benson's DC staff and they're willing to help us with the E D A if you have on the wheat lab and I ask. Um Delaney to get the um gallon his DC office, the requirements to that grant. So we'll see if people, I guess, wait for John to, I had thought that Dan Moore, but I had not had any feedback from. Mercury's group on a clear day to follow up. And then I also asked them to um. Get involved and understand that we're working with some of those Oregon team up. Yes, they buy up. So there's a couple of things that I thought. We could definitely need some local help on. They always ask if they can help with any federal agencies and local. Met with a industrial company trying to come into Arlington last week and nothing on that.
Busy.
What do you got, Lainey? Oh, yeah. Um we finished up our last session at AOC, so yay.
Officially county college graduates.
Yes.
We should have had a graduation party.
We did. They took us to dinner, pomp and circumstance, cap and gown.
That'll be during the opening.
Cap and gowns will come.
The opening of AOC annual conference.
Oh, yeah, you guys get to go up there and. Super fun. And then I attended the South Gillum Health District meeting and then they had their budget. Hearing on the twenty sixth with Jay past. Um we had the breakfast meeting with uh Gina. That's good, and her husband. Um then I went to Chris's um M C I tabletop. Um exercise in Arlington. Um Chris can elaborate on it, but there was ODOT there. Um people from Morrow County, public health person. First thirty. Breaking state please. So EMS from both ends of the county, fire. Yeah, their scenario was that the a drunk driver came off of the off ramp into Arlington. From the westbound and flew over the caboose. And lit into the park during the car show. So.
Wow.
That was the scenario.
About seventeen injured walking, yes.
Yes.
Did you come up with the scenario? I'm kind of sort of a, I was, because I wanted to come, a drunk driver come up off the off ramp. Well, actually come in eastbound, but yeah, um during the car show and injuring a bunch of people, so. Um but Hood River facilitated it for me. Um and they came up, came up with the. The seventeen injured and different injuries and stuff like that. But it was a really good turnout. We had thirty, I had Good Shepherd Hospital there. That pretty much the the one that we didn't have there was a representative from M C M C, which would be a big player for us, but.
Watt Co. had a person.
Yeah, we had railroad. Um Jed was there from the port and um City of Arlington Public Works, Shanna was there and. I I, you know, a lot of the players um. Uh Morrow County, Sherman County, Arlington EMS, Arlington Fire, Sheriff's Office, Public Health. There was quite a few people there, so and I think that the one big thing that we did learn. Was that the City of Arlington's public works did not have radios to talk to ODOT. And so I'm working with Shanna just to try and get some bids from Motorola and see what I can do. About getting them some portables um in their shop down there that they can at least grab a a portable and have it with them, so.
Yeah, imagine probably even the City of Gomind, yeah.
Yeah, because they don't have any. Yeah, because they don't have any, well, they've got mobiles in their pickup, I think, but they don't have the digital channels either, so. Gotta work on the public works stuff to be able to talk to ODOT for any kind of, like, because another scenario we thought of for MCI was uh somebody plodding through downtown during the parade with the July in common.
Or even into the park.
Yeah, that too. So the public works, I think, for the cities are, are lacking their communications to ODOT and law enforcement during uh MCI or uh with the digital channels now, so. Yeah.
Good learning.
Yeah, because they think now how to
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, we even mentioned.
Well, I missed it, but I was rude.
I, yeah, I just wanted to say that um we dodged bullet the last three days, which I didn't even think about it until uh yesterday, actually, during the parade, um and then I really thought about it today in the shower. I was like, oh, my God, did we dodge a bullet? With the internet being out for the last three days, um we had potentially no fuel to be had um around here. Um, and it started really scared the crap out of me. So I thought, you know, you guys need to know that, because I don't know what the hell we need to do around here about our fiber, about our internet. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what we got, I don't know what we can do. Um, because we have no CFN, we have no PAC Pride, and Sinclair their, their pumps to outside could be used with ca- cash. Um, and you could go inside and use your credit card inside Sinclair, but PAC Pride wasn't accessible and um you could use your PAC Pride cards inside, but you could not, you can, can't use them at the pumps um or credit card or debit cards at the pumps outside. As long as that, as long as the the mini marks open, you can use your, they, because
They had to set the amount.
Yeah, they had set up a, a cell phone hotspot inside um that wasn't using Wi-Fi. Or using the internet is what they had done. Bless their hearts for Sinclair to do that for all of the tours that were here in town. But no CFN and no PAC Pride outside. Um, so there's no fuel to be had, um and I'm just glad that we didn't have a fire. I started thinking, oh, my God, if we had a big fire, um, yeah. And and the deputy asked me yesterday morning during the parade about going to gas and up with their CFN card, and I'm like, you're not gonna get it. There's no, there's no internet. And so I, I made some phone calls this morning and I, I talked to Hat and Hours a little bit, and they said that they they would potentially, if, if push came to shove, they would um open up the Sinclair station and write down stuff for us in the Sinclair station as far as ambulance, sheriff's office, fire department, stuff like that, and keep track of it for us in time of an emergency. Um, Dewey, I talked to him and he said he's got forty-seven hundred gallons um of storage of red diesel, which is gonna give him for the graders and the water truck, no gas. Um, sheriff's office, we, you know, we go to Sinclair or whatever and get written down or whatever. Um, but that's, that's six in the morning to eight o'clock at night, but anything after that, that we, we'd be calling Kathy Johnson or whatever.
Get them out.
Get them out of bed. I talked to Greg Smith this morning, the fire chief, and he said that then it's, you know, they have the old time gas pumps, but we'd have to be calling somebody, probably Brian Ryder or somebody, and saying, hey, can you come down to Bennett's? And you know, come some gas for us. Devin, you know, calling whoever, and we can pump some diesel out of the truck. Um, but that's it, no gas. So, you know, it's an issue, and I, I don't know, you know, Catherine's here too with the whole fiber and the internet, but I don't know what to do. Like, you know, I, I used to be worried about frigging backup generators and electricity going out, not having any gas to pump that way. But man, the whole internet going down is one of the situation now.
I think, though, um, I mean, one thing that we could look at or explore is, because they were they were rally customers, right? Because the line that the city and county owned was working. I mean, that's what the P SAP runs on, that's what the courthouse runs on. So maybe if there are some I don't think it can just be like every store is essential, every business is essential, but like if there are some pinch points where there are essential is maybe talking to some of those owners about having that backup connectivity, whether that's a partnership with LSN on the city and county owned one or Windwave or, you know, whoever else is in our sort of other pipeline, so that there's multiple places, so that if Raleigh has an outage, there's a backup.
Is it backup today?
Yeah, it came back up yesterday. Another option is, uh, because when I was talking with my meeting with Brad Comp. Um, Brad Comp actually has a mobile white, like, trailer that they rent out for emergency services, like currently is out on the fire that's happening over in Five White Salmon right now. So in emergency event, they send that to, so if we did have an emergency where there was no service and we needed service
So that's like what they do during hurricanes.
And I can get that, it's, it's, well, I can get what's called a cow, which is, sell you around wheels.
But I wonder if maybe we could do something like that and even do like a Starlink mobile thing.
And Starlink is actually giving, you know, Starlink has, well, their, their RVs set up, but they're also starting to get, they're, they're looking at the whole mobile thing because they're looking at a potential um mobile thing that can be put into uh sheriff's vehicles too, so they can actually move and go, yeah, anyhow, but what, what my question is
Like the stores, because people can run credit cards.
Check or cash only. But my question is, are we ever gonna get any competition, I guess? I mean, is there, i- is there gonna be any others out there, well, besides Starlink, I guess? That, you know, it's, it, it just seems like, you know, we're all, all, it's either Raleigh or nothing, I guess, for these people to shoot from. And, and I know that Raleigh was down, but if there was another source, like, I, I know that Porchnick is over fossil, but if somebody else had another I know nothing about this, but if there was another company that somebody could hook internet up with, would that company have been down too? Would it been going through the same, okay, so.
No, so they each, I mean, depends on where they're getting their service, but like, so the line between the line that the county and city have fiber in
Right.
was intact.
Right.
So, and it has connection to the pit up too.
Right.
So if, for instance, if Raleigh had been using that line instead, they wouldn't have had any disruption.
Right.
Which is why, like, the P SAP didn't go down, because the P SAP is using radio and that fiber line. So, um, so, yeah, I mean, I think the city's long-term goal is to have choice.
Well, I'm hoping it's the city and county goal.
Well, yeah.
It goes back to how many customers can a provider get to be, to be viable. I mean, Arlington TV struggles with that, and they've got really, really, really good fiber.
And are they the only one in Arlington?
There's Century Links down there, Wavelengths down there to a few places. And then Gordon Aden, the rest of them, you know, all offer their um, their services, but the one that's the most dependable, which I don't worry about, it's a fiber thing. On TV.
I know, and we have, and I have Arlington TV, but it's down there, and I mean, we never really had any trouble with them at all.
And if you do, you squirt in that and get you, get you going.
But we have, we have Century, and I love Century and went to Arlington TV, but there are choices down there.
And Century Link was miserable. I had it at one point. Just keeping the remote in China, we really moved.
So I'm kind of wondering, but um, got to be thinking about that is why Raleigh didn't reach out to Gillon County or the City of Condon and connect have an emergency connection to, to continue to operate. I mean, it wouldn't have cost them that much money to connect into our system and operate the whole system here while they're climbing down wherever.
Yeah, there was nothing to be visual or thinking.
And I, and I'm still getting that, and I don't know, but I get messages of, number one, I, I heard that, okay, there was a line cut. And, but then
Think that was the first one, that was John Day.
Well, then, but then I heard that the second thing was that, no, that, that they were actually switching over to five G and then there was a line cut during the five G switch over. So I don't know what's true and what's not true.
And then they said the last, this last one was over towards Central Oregon.
Yeah.
Then, yeah, area, but we had a power, we had one outage before that, that was just like our house and Jeremy Delaney's and my dad's house that we called them and they were like, oh, well, we might be able to get to it tomorrow. So, yeah. So it's the third time mine's been out, so I'm just close to calling.
There's also a potential, like, when we build, when we figure out the unincorporated areas, there may be providers who right now are, don't think Condon is viable because Raleigh is already embedded in here. But if they are coupling, serving, offering, say, like a wireless solution within Condon and also serving the unincorporated areas, then there, you may see some competition like start to come when there's a customer base outside of the unincorporated air, unincorporated area where they could combine the two and actually make it financially feasible. But a lot of the feedback that Catherine had gotten when we've talked to other people by and large has been like, there's not enough of a population base to have somebody come in and build a new network or build over the top of Raleigh, or there's been some who have said that maybe they could do a wireless solution potentially and compete, um, but of course, they haven't done it, so, um.
So I think that they'd be losing some customers after this, forget.
Oh, yeah.
No doubt.
Trust me.
And it'll get worse, there'll be more episodes of that
Yeah.
that happen, and will make it, you know, it's uncomfortable
Yeah.
today to not have internet.
Yeah, well, I think, I, so the city's on Windway or Inland, and so we didn't lose any.
Yeah.
But I, I, and then at my house, I'm on Starlink now, but from what I can understand, there was a total lack of communication from Raleigh
Yes.
to anybody out here, and so, and I do know they no longer have an employee and they were looking for one for here. But I haven't heard anything in months. And I, I think that's the big thing too, and that's why I'm hoping with this broadband, that maybe we can encompass the rural and city and Arlington wants to be a part of that. Also, when all the broadband, maybe when it comes out, is to get a system, because it needs to be presented, and now we know that, we know that now.
And I think, like, one of the smart things that we can learn maybe from, like, Wheeler County is that they, I think, when they were doing their wireless system, technically that's county-owned, they go out for an RFP for the provider, so Porchnick, whoever is the provider, doesn't actually own the underlying asset. What they have is in the agreement, expectations for service lines. So if you're the chosen one in that particular, like, the expectation is you're not gonna have outages, you're gonna have good customer service, you're gonna need certain speeds, and then municipality has the right to then terminate that agreement if you are not living up to your expectations. So, because where we're in right now is like, we can go and ask nicely for Raleigh to think about doing things differently, but we have no way of compelling them to do that, and because there, there's not a good alternative option, the market doesn't force them to do that either, because people don't have a place to go.
Yeah. And then it's interesting, because then on top of that, I think a bunch of people were losing self, Verizon was
Verizon sucks.
Yeah, and I, I feel like it was, they were overloaded, because how many people were running hotspots and using their
Yeah.
five G, their LTE to do things, because there was no internet, yeah.
Yeah, and a very unhappy two-year-old too, really wanted to watch.
I was not, and I had
Didn't understand why that wasn't working yet.
Because I was like, I was one of the lucky ones with TV. Art of the DVD player this weekend.
It was, it was a lot of touch and go in our household this weekend with those.
Download a few movies.
Yeah.
Um, that's all I had.
One thing I might, I forgot to say is I had a interview, televised, television type, or I'll tell, taped interview with EDP Renewables for promotional thing I put together about promoting renewables and other county governments and whatnot, did that last.
So you're a movie star.
A movie star, they actually came to the house and watched me smoke turkey. While we talked about renewals. And, and Miranda got to be in a part of it.
So Miranda's the movie star, lovely. Um.
She didn't knock on my door.
I don't know what to tell you, dear.
Um, for me, let's see, uh, next Tuesday, Frontier Regional nine-one-one board meeting um is happening in Condon, down at the EST building, that's at one. Nothing really, I think, pressing or big to kind of report on.
County deal was kind of interesting the other day, because they kind of started out wanting to pay less, and they kind of realized they needed some facts, so maybe they need to pay more.
Mm-hmm. You know, no. Um, let's see, what else?
Elaborate a little bit, people.
So, so in the agreement for Frontier nine-one-one set out when Jefferson County joined, there's a formula that is how all of our dues come in, basically. And so it says, like, the percentage of it is based, is just split evenly between the four. And then, I think it's, what, is it seventy-five percent is just split evenly between the four? The other twenty-five percent is split according to population. And so what has happened is that with the nine-on-one tax increase, the three little counties are bringing in almost as much as Jefferson County is in um nine-one dollars. And we are more than meeting where our dues are. So we're, I mean, more than covering really what the budget needs to be, and so that has given Jefferson County an opening to say, because of all these new one, nine-one-one dollars, we don't need to pay our user fee out of our general fund as, as much as what we originally agreed to, because look at all this, you're flush with cash kind of thing. The argument is, well, you, you guys are using like almost ninety percent of the service, most, like, the extra dispatchers. The fact that we are chronically understaffed is due largely because of the volume of, like, needing your calls, not the three little counties. And you are continuing to ratchet back how much you're paying. Eventually, there's gonna be a collision course, and, and then there's also this other argument that the three little counties continue to to put in general fund money for Frontier Telenet, which is the network that, that they're running on for free, basically, because Jefferson County doesn't put any money in. And so uh Jefferson, who is doing his job, he's advocating for Jefferson County, but is definitely not advocating for the little guys, um, has been making the case over and over that they should be paying less and less every year. And so it finally sort of came to a head at the last budget meeting.
Came around, you know, it kind of came around and
Thousand on top of their nine-one funds since the day that they signed the agreement, two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. But also, you have to remember, they're collecting that part of that money from their own users, which is City of Madras and their, their own fire departments, EMS and stuff like that, so it's not all county money coming from them. So, um, a couple
I'm pretty sure they're actually collecting more user fees.
Years ago, they asked for a reduction from two fifty-six to one eighty-six, because they're gonna start buying new radios and, and redoing their um radio system over there. So we gave them a reduction from two fifty-six to one eighty-six two years ago.
That was just a one-year deal, or what?
That was the first year, that was the first year. We said, okay, so then that then last year, we gave them a reduction from two fifty-six to one sixteen to finish that radio project. And so this year, they wanted another reduction and in during the budget committee meeting and we're, I, we're like, no. No, no, and they, and we just pretty much during the budget committee meetings that no, we're gonna put the two fifty-six in there, but you guys, this is gonna be a board discussion and a board decision. So in, in the June meeting, whenever that was, June twentieth or whatever, we went to the board and Jeff Ross Mustin and Sheriff um Paul presented it to the board, and they're all about, you know, and, and Lynn Morley was there as Frontier Telenet, you know, whatever, and, and they're they're talking about the Frontier Telenet versus, you know, what, how much, you know, we pay what, four hundred fifty thousand, Frontier Regional pays for Frontier Telenet for fifty or four eighty
Mm-hmm.
in costs, because we do run the highest percentage off of uh Frontier Telenet's framework. Um, so anyhow, that, you know, and, and they're just trying to say that, you know, anyhow, trying to talk Anyhow, trying to talk about their reduction or whatever. And finally, I have enough. And I said, look, I don't care about Frontier Telenet. I care about what's happening in that center. And you, Jefferson County are. Eighty percent of the calls, of the call volume, and you're eighty percent of the population and the call volume. And everything that's going on in that dispatch center.
The, the, the comment that was really good, Chris, was when, um, I don't know who said it, that. We get put on hold while we subsidize you.
Mike Smith, I think, might have said that because Sheriff Smith is there too. And, um, but what. Pride me was here a couple of months, I mean, here not too long ago, is when I was. Was going to be told that I was going to have to potentially start entering my own warrants and different things like that. And I'm like, no, 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 no. Uh, we can't do that because we don't have a twenty four hour. Um, there are twenty four hour. Service. And so I can't enter my own warrants because I'm not twenty four hours. They are, and so they have to enter them. And so, but Jefferson County has a twenty four hour gym. And they're, yeah, so they, whatever, but. Um, so luckily that never came to fruition. So anyhow, I just. I just, I couldn't, I couldn't, I finally just, and I left Jeff Rasmussen and I had gone round and round and round about it and he knows. But I just finally said, you know, I can't do this. I've said there, I'm totally against. A reduction to, to Jefferson County again this year and um. Sat on the budget committee for many years and I'm against it. And it didn't happen this year. So. They can go off, they, they, they will never be able to find another dispatch center. For cheaper than two hundred fifty six thousand. They looked at Kirk County and Kirk County said, we can't do it for cheaper than that. And yes, the nine one one tax went from seventy five cents to a dollar. To a dollar and a quarter, I think it is now. And so we are bringing in more from Jefferson County for that. Um, on top of what we all get, but still it's, they'll never be able to get somewhere for two hundred fifty six thousand dollars.
But surprisingly, they don't bring in. I mean, I think what the little counties are just over a half million, and I think Jefferson County maybe like.
Five hundred and seven.
Five hundred and seventy. So it's not really like, oh, Jefferson County's coming in with all of the resources and we just are. Like we legitimately are bringing in almost identical.
Some thousand per county and they're like five hundred, I want to say they're five oh one and we're four hundred and. Forty four or something like that.
Well, the bottom line is you're not paying the pressure anyway.
No, not if you want to go, no, not if you want to.
And I think that's part of what they were beginning to realize.
Well, they do. I mean, they were complaining earlier about the. Dispatching and having a, a separate center in Jefferson County and they kind of went down that. And I finally just said to Sheriff Hogg, if you want it that bad, just separate, just separate from us. But he knows that they can't run a center on three quarters of a million dollars.
And they talked about doing a second center, bringing two, and then putting like two people over Jefferson County, but then found out that. The OBM says, no, you can't spend nine one one taxes on that, a second.
So they would have to pay more. So it didn't take, as soon as I said it like that, he. Backed away and said he was happy to remain a committed partner to Frontier nine one one. Okay, so so far everyone's staying under the folds uh, so far. And we haven't heard anything more about Sherman County's flirtations with Wosco and Hood River County and have not heard.
I think her raises comes to the back way to see what the new director does.
Yes, and then so, and the CAD system is all up and running.
It went live on June twenty first. And I know there's been some pickups, you know, and stuff like that as far as um, the. Getting to act at nine one and just everything's like that going, but I think everybody's just trying to be patient and work through it.
Yeah, I think they got them straightened out on our, as far as the EMTs now. Yeah.
Yep, and the new directors on board and I think. Going gamebusters as a whole list of things she's wanting to change and improve. So. Um, okay, so other things happening. Um. One, I wanted to circle back on the measure one ten stuff with Clackamas County. So here is what we heard back from. To D Smith, who's the chair over there. You guys might have been on this email too, but she basically asked if we would consider joining Clackamas County in our efforts to send a referral to the voters. In May, uh, for the May twenty twenty four uh, election. Here's what they are doing. They are. Basically putting two questions on the ballot, trying to convince the legislature to remove certain provisions of one ten. So the questions they're posing are, one, should legislators representing Clackamas County introduce slash pass legislation. Repealing provisions of measure one ten that decriminalized illegal drugs, including for juveniles. And two, should Governor Kotak call a special legislative session to address measure one ten's drug decriminalization and its impacts on crime? And homelessness. So when I read this. My uh, gut reaction was that I feel like we could accomplish what they're like, I asked Delaney to look and see where our voters were. They were lopsidedly against measure one ten. And so I'm not sure that they would vote any differently. I mean, we could put these questions on, but I think. We could almost just as effectively write a letter from the court to our legislators. Referencing what's happening in Clackamas County and what the vote was during the last election.
Yeah, that's probably more effective, I think.
That's kind of what I was thinking, rather than spend county dollars, like putting. Basically replicating what the voters already told us during the election for this. And I also think that, like, their approach is probably different because I, one, they were. Close, but slightly before.
The only thing I would. Saying, it's just a thought about putting on the ballot, it creates local conversations around the issues and. But I don't know if there's any teeth in that.
Yeah, I'm not, that was what my take. I thought at first they were trying to repeal within the county. And then I was like, oh, we could do that. But they're just asking questions, should the legislature do this? And I think our voters were pretty clear in there. So I would almost suggest like we look at writing a letter from the court to our legislators. Maybe even talk to Kimberly Lindsay a little bit to see if she could provide anecdotally, like what our providers are seeing on the ground. And sharing that. And we could reference what Clackamas County is doing and say to our legislators, we hope that you will join. In the effort to repeal these parts of the law.
Do you, don't you feel there's a shift going on?
Well, I think it's not ending up how people thought it was, right?
They're not getting the results and we're starting to see the problems and there, there's a shift going on. On, well, just the whole thing. But, but that, I think would have some. At least, I mean, we're small, two thousand people on the team that we can have, but would have as much or more impact than we can do is. Not like we don't know where we stand, but still, especially if you put, she put Kimberly in on in there.
Ask her for some.
Because she's got a strong opinion and can come up with that.
So if you guys are comfortable with that, we would just, I mean, it's nothing that's, obviously the legislature's not meeting. So it's nothing that's like time sensitive because. You know, it's, they would have to wait until next spring to even look at it. But at least we could put ourselves on the record in the next couple of months and then work with Kimberly to craft a nice letter. Does that work for you guys? Okay, we will add that as an, as something to bring back um, for us to take a look at the letter. And other than that.
Yeah, they, uh, a, a side note, they had good things to say about Kimberly Lindsay. Down there at County College.
Yeah.
And maybe we're talking about mental health.
She's very good at what she does. So I'm hoping she could help us uh, craft a good. Good letter, effective letter. Um, other than that, it's been a while since we met. Let's see what else has been going on. We did hear. Um, back from Senator Merkley's office that the earmark for the Liberty Theater is in the draft ag spending bill.
You have to remind.
We had originally asked for more, Dan had come back and said, based on what had been funded previously, they were recommending we modify our request.
So we did.
To a quarter million so that we had a. Had a shot at getting it in. And we did get the full quarter million. So, um.
Do, do we have a? Probably a Jeff question, I'm curious what that'll do.
So when I asked Jeff. He said it could get, the roof is probably the most critical thing to get replaced.
Roof need to be, the wall need to be tied to the roof.
Yeah, so it's the roof and then the outside shell, he thought would. The quarter million could probably do those two things. But there's rewiring and a bunch of other stuff that we would want to go chase other dollars for. So um, I did reach out to the Arts Council and. Um, offer to sit down and kind of strategize like other places they could go chasing some money. It's not been scheduled yet, but we'll sort of come up with a plan for them.
Well, within that strategy, you'd be, how you're going to spend this too.
Correct, yeah. And we'll hear, I mean, the appropriate, so. For those watching at home that are unfamiliar, the federal government runs on an October fiscal year. And so. They will need to pass appropriations bills in um. By October first. They regularly miss those deadlines and do continuing resolutions, which just keeps the federal government open while they're working out their disagreements. Sometimes those continuing resolutions can be months, like they just keep kicking the can down the road until they get into. And with a um. Election year coming up, that should be very interesting in twenty twenty four. Let's just all keep our fingers crossed that. They can pass the ag bill before stuff starts going sideways uh, in Washington DC, because it will happen, mark my words. Um, so fingers crossed that it gets through and that the earmark is in there, but uh, it's not by any means a done deal. So.
So didn't they, didn't we give them seventeen thousand dollars for the roof? What, did they just band-aid?
On what their stuff.
And they might have done a little bit of patching.
But it wasn't a full repair.
Okay, it, it needs full replacement, I think, this way.
Any of those roofs that have that. Yeah, her problem.
I think it's been letting in some water in certain areas of the, so there's some water damage beneath it that needs to be repaired too and. Um, but it's good news, good initial news. Um, let me see what else. That is it right now. Um, oh, we are going to be kicking off Rocket two point O, the first. Meeting um, is scheduled for uh, the twenty seventh of July. That is going to be just a small, relatively small, I think eight people are on the invite list. And that is to take the. Uh, workforce pipeline. Concept that I showed you guys a couple of weeks, months ago, whenever it was. Um, and really get firmer commitments from the community college, the school districts on. Some of the other pa- parts of the pathway, basically. How do we get kids that are. When they complete our OAC program and are saying, yes, I want, I want to pursue this, I want college courses, I want to. Get more hours. How do we make sure that that happens with kids who are saying, this is for me? Um, so that'll be the discussion on the twenty seventh. And then in August, we will have a separate um, workshop. That is talking about specifically how do we get, engage employers. Um, so that one will have ways management, some other folks, different folks at the table.
I did with um. EDP the other day, I throw that out. We'd like to see more, I mean, who in Canada, EDP renewable should.
Yeah.
Would like to see more visible employer involvement than initially we're working on.
Yeah, I did go up uh, last week and uh, visited the Neil Early Learning Center, which is the. Um, the early learning center that's at the Port of Morrow. And met with their director and um, I think executive director and talked about. How they came to be. And they actually started one of their businesses at the port, Boardman Family Foods. Boardman Foods, I think, um, actually were the ones who started that center. And continue to provide support to it. And so they have kind of a unique model where they have some of their major industry contribute every year. And to keep it afloat. And so I. It was an interesting.
Employer in, employer budgets.
Exactly. Um, and the other thing is I did ask for them to send us like what their um, value pitch is. Like when they go out to their port employers, what are they saying to them to get them to invest, all of those kinds of things? And how they're raising money. Um, because they actually. They have a center that has zero to five in it, I think about eighty kids. But their tuition rates for their infant toddler, I think are only about a hundred dollars more than we pay here. And they are fully sustainable. So. Somewhere in there, there's a magic mix of um. Shared services and other things that they're getting. So like, oh, the company that sponsors them provides all the financials for them. Provides a little bit of staffing time. Originally, when they were hired, they were hired as Boardman Foods employees. So they received Boardman Foods. Benefits and that's what allowed them to recruit teachers. So they have some interesting lessons that they've learned from dealing with. The private sector and how you kind of bridge public and private funding. Um, and so, and they. Have said, we are very interested in helping region wide, like figure out how to make things work in your counties. So.
Well, with what's going on with development, everything else. That employee pool is going to come reasonably for a long time.
Yeah.
Just going to move around with it regions.
And they have a waitlist.
Employment pool at all.
They have a waitlist in Boardman too. Even though they have doubled their facility basically, since they opened, they have a waitlist. Um, so there may be, some of those even might be Arlington families honestly, who decide they want to bring their kids to Boardman and then work. During the day. Um, so I think we can. Once we have this conversation in August, I think part of, I hope what's going to come out of that is a larger view of like. Not just looking within, who are the employers within the county, but also, you know, because.
Gillon County, you go to Wilbur. All the people work at the dairy.
So there may be some opportunity to think outside of the county in terms of how we can help shore up our child cares here. And um, give them some additional capacity to be able to, to support the entire region, really. Um, because it feels like our employees, our citizens are moving back and forth across the county line frequently. So I feel like there's an opportunity to maybe tap into some of the work that's been happening in Boardman with employer engagement. So. Um, that was a good meeting and a good connection. Um, other than that, I don't think I have. Anything else. Um, again, just as a reminder for folks, normally we, we would be meeting on the nineteenth. We are actually going to be meeting on the twenty sixth this month, which is the fourth Wednesday, and we are canceling the August second meeting. So that'll make up for the two. Um, so obviously it'll all be noticed, all of that kind of stuff is normal, but um, just. Uh, make a note of that for your, for those who regularly follow us.
Um, I'm not, I am going to the Capco meeting this Friday. They had it scheduled for last Friday, but it got canceled and moved to this Friday. And I'm taking Sabrina Wagner with me. So that we can get her face in front of them and see what maybe. Services.
The other thing, uh, since you're going already, um, I know a food pantry board member who is my mother. Who has some questions about their energy assistance and how. How like, how to access it, whether there's some ways to improve access for Gillon County residents.
Did she want to go to?
I don't know if she wants to go, but she probably wants you to ask some questions.
Tell her to send me the question.
Okay.
But yeah, and then I think we're going to try to later maybe make a trip to visit with W two.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? If not, it is twelve ten and let's adjourn the meeting.